Year. For those of you who were here last year, you understand how we run our meetings. And I might ask you even to step up in this meeting. So you can show them what you know and what you've learned so far. But I'll begin by introducing myself and welcoming you to our first Wayne County Commission Youth Council Meeting of the Year. And I thank all of you for wanting to have a voice in your community. Because without you, there is no future. And without you, parents like me and others will not know what you want to see and the changes you want to see in the world, right? And that's what we do as elected officials. So I'm Wayne County Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick. I represent Northwest Detroit and Redford Township. We have commissioners that represent all over the forty-three communities in Wayne County. And in two thousand and twenty, when I became, well, it was actually after I became a commissioner. But in two thousand and twenty, I had the vision to start a youth council. Because I thought about when I was young, if I could have the ability to have a seat at the table and to learn things about politics and how I could have a voice. I didn't really have that. So I introduced a resolution. And my colleagues on the Wayne County Commission agreed that there should be a commission. And so we voted, and now we have a commission. So I'm so glad to see you're here. You are here in our fifth year as, yes, so give your hands a clap. So I will also like to introduce our legislative aide for the Wayne County Commission. Most of you probably already talked to her. This is Shante Mosby. And if you have any questions, any concerns, this is the lady that's gonna take care of you. And hasn't she been taking care of things? Let's give her a hand clap. I also have my community chief of staff, Michael Van Tool. He's all over the place, whatever I need, he's there. So I want to thank you for all that you do as well. And then we have the Judge Perkins. He is actually my constituent, right? And so he lives in my district, and he's a judge in the probate court. And maybe some of you want to be a judge one day, but he donated his time. He volunteered himself to be here today with you all to actually swear you in to office. So you get a very special opportunity that, you know, most people don't get in their lifetime to be sworn in by a judge. So let's give Judge Perkins a hand for being here.
Thank you.
And then we have our commission staff that's here, that we cannot do this work without our internal staff. So can you introduce yourself? And we have a staffer in the back, any other staffers here? Okay, can you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, everybody, my name is Shante Walter McKinney. I'm an attorney with the commission here, and I'm excited to be here to help you all have a successful year.
All right, thank you. And your husband is, I know, I just, I mean, it can't go without saying.
Sure. So I am also the wife of Donovan McKinney. He's a state rep for the Michigan House.
Right, so we have two foes, right? She's powerful, right? She can go to her husband and get some things done for you, right? And in fact, we met with him. Don't, some of you remember, we met with Donovan. That's why I wanted her to mention him, because he was very kind to open up his office in Lansing to spend some time with you, to talk to you about your issues and concerns, right? So we really appreciate the rep, our rep, and tell him I said hello. He is a great guy, he is a great guy. You wanna, you just press that. And if you want to talk into the mic, you just press the button here, it turns, it lights up, and you can, you know, say what you need to say. All right, Felicia, where are you gonna come and introduce yourself? She's the head honcho. Thank you. All right, and we have the very, very important folks in the house. Those are our parents, your parents, right? They're so very important because they made you, right? You wouldn't be here without them, so we have to give them a hand clap. Thank you, parents. Thank you so much for being here. All right, do we have any other members that need to come sit at the table? You're signing in, okay, come on. Okay, you can, you can sign it for, oh, you're getting the paperwork, go ahead, okay, and then you could come sit. So we want to start by doing a roll call. At every commission, you, youth council meeting, we do a roll call to take attendance. Because if you're not here, this council doesn't work. So we need you to be here, and we'll talk about the code of conduct in attendance and how if you miss so many sessions, then we have to remove you from the council. Because it can't work if you're not here, right? So we'll get into that. But I want to start by going around the table and introducing yourselves. And we'll check you off as being here, and plus you signed in. But we want you to tell your name, your school, your grade. If you are considering running for office today, you know you have two minutes to do a two-minute speech of why you want to be the president, the vice, the chair, the vice chair, secretary, or social media chair. So you can just say very briefly that you want to run for whatever you want to run for. You're not gonna give the presentation now. Right now, we're just quick introduction, your name, school, grade, if you want to run, and what your essay was about. What, what are you passionate about? What do you want to see change? Because everyone wrote an essay, or you should have, on one main issue. We just want to know what that issue was. So we'll start around the table here. Can you get the mic? Yep, and you can push the button until it lights up at the bottom. Yep, there you go. One more time, not real, there, okay.
Hello, my name is Princess Skipper. I am a senior at Detroit Community High School. Sadly, I did not write an essay because the application came in a little late from my counselor. But I do think I might run for vice president. Because I am experienced, I am now president of my student council at my high school right now. So a change that I do want to see in the community or in general is a change of just the environment of people. I want to see people getting along, I want to see people not judging others based off color or based off background. I want to see people coming together as one, because we're all human.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think my name was on the paper. I actually didn't get an email, so she actually sent it to me.
Okay.
So I could be here today. My, but my name is Leah Irving, I come from Cass Tech High School. And when I was talking in my essay, I was talking about food deserts or desserts, however you want to say it. But it was basically just dispute, dis, disjuke, what's it called?
Distribute?
Yeah.
Distribute, okay.
Distributions, sorry.
Of food, okay, and the scarcity of food, right?
Yeah, unhealthy food to impoverished neighborhoods, you know, where they can't afford the healthy food and things. So just the, the tax inflation and just cost inflation of healthy food and communities, yeah.
Thank you. And I'm not sure how we missed you, but we know you were part last year and served, so we got you, we got you. Okay. Just one time and let up, yep.
Okay, third time's a charm. Hi, everybody, my name is Kelly Cox, I'm a, I go to Cass Tech and I'm a senior. I wrote my essay about sociology and kind of like the American caste system, how we're kind of divided on lower, middle, and higher class, and making sure resources are provided in an educational and career space to make sure that everybody has an equitable chance to improve their situation. And I'll be running for the social media manager.
Hi, my name is Brooke Bowers, I'm in the tenth grade and I go to Cass Tech. And what I wrote my essay on is water and water affordability in Detroit and the state of Michigan. We sit on twenty-five percent of the world's fresh water. And it's just insane that we can't afford water or we aren't getting clean water. Our infrastructure is old and the water, water is unaffordable, and it's a human right. Everybody needs water to live. So it's just horrible to me that people can't afford water or clean water.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kyla Gullidge, I go, I am a sophomore at Renaissance High School. I sadly will not be running for office, but I wrote my essay about overall just a lack of confidence in the youth and normalized bad habits. Because as you can speak, as you can see, especially in my school, a lot of people go through a lot of things and they do not talk about it. They do not bring light to it, and it starts to slowly deteriorate on you. And that's a normalized bad habit of being quiet, being just closed off around other people. So I definitely want to make sure that we normalize talking to people and asking for help.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Winat Hamka, I go to Fortson High School and I'm a junior. And my essay was about bullying and violence in our youth and how it affects the youth's mental health. And I will be running for a position.
You, I'm sorry, you will, or which one do you know?
I'm still kind of thinking about it.
Okay, no problem, no problem, thank you.
Hi, I'm Maev Ritzek, I'm a twelfth grader at Florrick High School. And I wrote my essay about disparity in socioeconomic status, specifically in how it's distributed to schools and how education should not be based on the amount of money that you make or your family makes.
And will you be running for anything? That's okay, no, okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Eva Smith, I'm a junior at Woodhaven. I will not be running for office today. I wrote my essay about the difference in education that people from different socioeconomic backgrounds receive, specifically people with less fortunate backgrounds, and how we can work to provide equal opportunities for those students, whether it be through tutoring or additional help at school. I think we can make that happen.
Thank you. Okay, sure.
Okay, hello, my name is Amir Qasim Abdulaziz, and I'm a senior at Frontier International Academy. I will not be running for one of the positions, unfortunately, and, uh, give me, I kind of forgot what my essay was on.
You, that was the only thing, your grade and your essay.
Okay, I kind of forgot what it was on, can I?
Okay.
Hit it up real quick.
Or anything you're passionate about.
I really want this community to get, you know, even a tad bit better, and I hope that whatever I can do here will impact that on that, in that way.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right, okay. Hi, everybody, my name is Nivee, this is my second year on the council. I'm a junior at Northville High School and I represent District Nine. I will be running for office today, I'll be running for chair. And just, it's great to meet you all. One of the topics I'm most passionate about, unfortunately, I couldn't really finish that thing on time. I, I promise I can still write. But one of the things I'm most passionate about is our media, our literacy rate across our schools, something that specifically affects our youth. And I'll be working, I'll be looking forward to, sorry, my throat's messed up. I'll be looking forward to working with you all, and I really hope we can have more meetups this year.
Okay, so Daddy, you know, you didn't have to write another essay. Once you're in the council, the youth council, you don't have to write the, for the next year and the next year. Want to make sure they're, they're still on the phone, so, so you don't have to write it every year, so you're okay. All right. Yes, okay. Okay.
This is my voice here at the One Country Commission Youth Council. My essay is about youth mental health, like the problem with anxiety, depression, or behaviors. I want to join this program because at my school, I have met people from all walks of life, which has helped me to understand different challenges that youth face. Also coming from a place where my, many people, especially youth and young women, have lack of access to education. I'm very passionate to learn new things, and I'm motivated to take, stand for those who need support and make a difference. My goal is to create a place where youth feel empowered and shared. And I believe together we can create a big future together, and thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. And then we're gonna call for those on the phone right when I mention that again, because we're right in the middle of others giving their presentation. So we'll call on you, what, that's okay, but what's your name?
My name is Choka.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll call you when we're next, ready for the next person on the phone.
Hi, everyone, my name is Meadow Williams, and I'm a junior at Renaissance High School. My, I will be running for a position, I will also be running for chair. And my essay was about the lack of access and the excess of access that youth have. I see a lot of excess to access to negative things and a lack of access to positive things, whether it be drugs, firearm, bullying, everything that they don't really need access to, but none of the good things, like education and positivity within the community. So I really would like to change that and like to see a difference in my district and District Eleven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Madison Fleming, I'm a junior at Cass Tech. And, oh, right, this is my second year on the council. And one thing I'm passionate about is like littering and pollution. I feel like it's a shame that like people would, you know, ruin their own neighborhoods by littering, and it's not good for the environment, and it doesn't look, you know, beautiful either. So, yeah, and, uh, there was the invocation thingy, is that like up for the, hold on.
Yes, we're gonna do that, we just kind of did things out of order.
Is that like an officer, like, can we, no?
No, no.
Okay.
But you can do the invocation as much as, you know, we allow, I guess, or members allow. Yeah, so, and you can do it today, please. We, we kind of skipped over that, because I thought this was gonna be shorter, we kind of changed the layout, but that's okay.
Okay.
You want to, after the phone, everyone on the phone goes through, okay?
All right.
Okay, thank you, all right.
I didn't prepare a speech or anything, but like, maybe social media, I don't know.
Okay, let's, let's think about it. Okay, so now we're ready for those on the phone. I think you can just start, because I can't see who's on the phone. If you can just say your name, your school, grade, if you want to run for office, and what your essay was about. Just jump in, anyone.
Okay, hi, everyone, my name is Rami Abdallah, I go to Fortson High School and I'm a junior. I'm not running for any positions this year, and I wrote my essay about mental health. I think that mental health is crucial for our overall, like, well-being, affecting like how we think, feel, and act in like our daily life. And I feel like prioritizing mental health through like self-care, support, and professional help can lead to like improved emotional resilience and like a better quality of life.
All right, I can go next. Hi, everyone, my name is Pekan Jitsin, I'm a senior at Ken High School. I will not be running for a position today, and I wrote my essay on the discrimination and disparities within the Wayne County community.
Thank you.
Oh, hi, I can go next. My name is Amol Mavadour, and I'm a junior at Northville High School. And I would like to run for secretary this year. And my essay was about food insecurity and like the scarcity of food in Wayne County and kind of how, how we can look to improve food security in all households all across the county.
That's what she said, foods, I'm sorry, your name one more time?
Amol.
It, okay, thank you, next. Did we get everyone on the line to introduce themselves?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm still next. Hi, my name is Calvin White, I'm a junior at Detroit Community High School. And I won't be running for anything, and I didn't write an essay because my counselor had got the papers a little bit late.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I think that is it. So we did the introductions, and now I'd like to officially open the meeting with the invocation. Invocation, did you? Can you? Okay.
I feel like I messed up.
It's okay to mess up.
Sorry.
Yep, we, that's how we learn.
It doesn't have to be long, does it?
It doesn't have to be long, one, one minute at the most.
Okay. I'm sorry, um, should we bow our heads? Okay, thank you heavenly Father for everything, for every blessing you've given to us, for every day that you give us to do better. Thank you for everybody who came to this meeting. Thank you for the parents, for birthing us, for, for just like allowing us to be here. Thank you for the staff for allowing us to be here. Yes, thank you, Lord, for everything, we are very grateful for you, amen.
Amen, yeah, it's perfect, yes. All right, so we're kind of shifting the agenda just slightly. I was gonna go over the program, but because we want to be respectful of Judge Perkins' time, we want to go ahead and do the swearing in of our members. So all of you should have an oath, and we're gonna do this all at one time. You're just gonna basically follow the judge's directions. And same on the phone, you should have a copy of the oath. We need you to raise your right hand and do what the judge tells you to do. All right.
Please stand. Everybody raise their right hand, and we, we all in this together. And repeat after me, I, say your name. Will maintain and respect the vision of the Wayne County Commission Youth Council. I will perform the duties of my membership fairly and honestly and do my very best to be an example for others to follow. I will at all times be grateful and keep a positive attitude while conducting myself in a friendly, respectful and law-abiding manner. And throughout life, I will strive to uphold the motto create opportunity realize success. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And it was my honor to be here and do this for you.
Thank you, thank you so much, did you want to say a few words? Definitely, go right ahead.
All right, I, I'll keep it real brief, but, you know, all of you are an inspiration. And, you know, I know you hear it and sometimes you get tired of it, but the reality is you are our future. And you have an opportunity that so many of your peers don't have. You're sitting at the table, you're in a position to make life-changing decisions for our community. And I, I look at each of you with the potential to go on and do great things. The sky's not the limit, the only limit is yourselves. And you have to understand that and embrace yourselves, and don't be afraid to take those challenges, to do things that are different, to be different. Be bold, embrace it, I thank you. And I'm here, the commission knows how to get in touch with me if I can ever help any of you, I'm here. If any of you are interested in law, I'm here, even if you're too, too L law student back there somewhere. All right, and it's, it's important, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you, it's my honor, my honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we do have food and refreshments, and we'll try to get through this meeting. Most meetings only last about an hour and a half, because we know that you're busy students. We want to make sure we're respectful of your time as well. So I believe in not meeting just to meet. We meet to get things done, to learn, to grow, and to accomplish things. So that's what we're about. So I'll start by giving you an overview of Wayne County and what this group is about, right? So each of you have a citizen's guide to Wayne County. And mine is a little different, this is a more updated one, but they're all the same in nature. It basically gives you the various departments of Wayne County, what Wayne County, how Wayne County is set up. We have a legislative branch, and then we have an executive branch and the judicial branch. You just met the judicial branch, which was Judge Perkins. As a commissioner, I am the legislative branch. What that simply means is I help to create law and to balance budgets of, of Wayne County. Our laws are called ordinances, but that's what we do. And we're the check and balance of Wayne County. We have an executive branch. And if you look further in, you're gonna see pictures of some of the commissioners. There are fifteen commissioners here. And then you see our executive branch of government, which is Warren Evans. He is the person that runs all of the various departments of Wayne County. He is kind of like an owner in a business, right? And they do everything, they could do a little Um, they do everything. They could do a little of the, uh, the marketing. They could do a little of a, a county. You do what you need to do to make your business run. Well, the county runs basically the same way, except on a large scale level where you have to hire people to run those various departments. Or in our case, we actually have elected officials that run the various departments of Wayne County. So the executive branch again is Warren Evans. Then you have the other elected branches of Wayne County. Uh, there are five. You have the county clerk, that is Kathy Garrett. She is the person over all of the records, um, your birth certificates, your death certificates. Um, then we have uh, the Wayne County prosecutors. If any of you want to be lawyers, that's um, the department that prosecute criminals and um, that is Kim Worthy. So that's what she does. She has a whole department of lawyers that, that help in that. Um, then we have Bernie, Bernard Youngblood. He is the register of deeds. He takes the property deeds that we have, all of the homes that we own in Wayne County. He registers them and make sure that we keep a, a safe record of who owns what in Wayne County. Then you have our Wayne County Sheriff Raphael Washington. He's the sheriff of our county. He makes sure that we're safe, that he runs the, the county jails. And uh, basically he keeps us safe. Then we have Eric Sabri. Uh, he is our treasurer, our county treasurer. He is the purse of the county. So he pays all of our bills and, and collects taxes. Um, so those are the main departments uh, and areas of Wayne County. These are all elected officials, the ones I just named, from the county executive to um, the uh, Wayne County Treasurer. They're all elected. You uh, when you turn, actually you can register, most of you can register to vote now at sixteen. You may not be able to actually vote until you're eighteen, but you can now register early. We just changed the law to allow you to register to vote at sixteen, if you didn't know that. Once you become eighteen, you will vote for all of these people up or down, just like we will have elections here today. Um, you know, you vote pe- people into office to do a certain job. Um, that's the same thing with elected officials. You, they're there to do the job. If they're not doing the job, then what should we do? Replace them or not vote for them again. I mean, that's what I would do, but you know. Um, some, sometime people vote on name recognition and things of that nature, but you gotta really look at what a person is really doing in office. Um, and then now we have to be careful of all of the fake news and all that stuff. I, yeah, that's crazy. But anyway, um, elections are important, you know, they are very important. And so for commissioners, for all of the branches that I just described, what we do is we sit at the table, this table, most of the time, and we look at all of the different contracts that are needed to, to run those departments. So from everything from like tissue paper to um, tables and chairs, right? We have to buy all of that stuff to run the departments and then we have to pay staff, right? We have to pay all of the people to run it. So we make sure that every dollar is being spent the right way and then that we don't waste your parents' money. Or if you're working now and you pay taxes, you pay us. So we work for you. Literally, we work for you. We, we wouldn't get paid if it wasn't for tax dollars. So I want you, if you take away nothing else from this program, take away the fact that you pay your elected officials to do a job. That's what you pay us to do. Um, and so with that, that, that's kind of what we do as um, commissioners. We make sure that every dollar is being spent right um, in all of the various departments that I just talked about. There are fifteen different commissioners. Each of you should know who your commissioner is. Um, if you don't, I want you to take a look at this booklet. Some of the booklets may not be updated um, with uh, the correct commissioners, but most of them are. So, but you should know who your commissioners are and by the time you get through with this program, you definitely will know who your commissioner is, if you don't. Um, let's see, anything else in here? So I'd like you, as your homework assignment, just read through this book so you will have a better understanding of Wayne County and how it works. Yes, you have a question. What's your question?
Yeah.
And please state your name, state your name first before any questions.
Okay, my, my name is Rami Abdallah. Um, where can we find the book if we're online?
So we will mail you a book out and you can also go, I was gonna say to the Wayne County website. However, I think that is down right now, but we will mail you one out. For everyone that's not here, we'll mail you a booklet, okay? It's called A Citizen's Guide to Wayne County.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
No problem. Any other questions so far? Okay, so just a little bit about the program um, in a nutshell. Um, and I'm gonna have Shantae talk about some, some of the activities that we have. But basically, we're here so that you have a voice. This is your council. You run it. We're gonna have an election right away so I can get out the way. I don't want to be here um, in your mix. I want you to decide how things run, um, some of your activities, what you do. You will prepare a resolution. Every year we prepare a resolution based on some of the issues that you thought were important. We take the top three issues and then you vote on which one rises to the top. And that's the issue that you get together and you write a resolution. Um, the first year, I'll say that we wrote about mental health or they, you guys wrote a resolution, crafted a resolution. We have staff attorneys that help you with that as well. Um, the first year was mental health. So we touched on mental health um, in the first year. The second year, it was gun reform. Uh, we even got the, the actual resolution. Part of it was gun safety. I don't know if any of you remember that, but we wrote a resolution, you wrote a resolution that talked to uh, safe storage. That became a law. And I, I mean, I, I know most of you are happy about that. I know I was. Um, you actually, some of the members went up to Lansing and lobbied and we sent it to the governor's office. She got it and that became law. So that's what you can do to make a difference in your community, okay? The third year, economic oppression. That's what you decided was important that year. The fourth year, substance abuse as it relates to mental health. And now we're here today in our fifth year and then you're gonna decide what to focus on. Now, what we can do is we can give you a copy of the resolutions that we have. And then you can also say, well, this already talked to it, but we want to expand on that issue. We want to do a little bit more. We want to dig into a piece of that and really um, concentrate on changing some laws around that. So you can do that. That's up to you. Um, this was a resolution that we did one year and I'll um, have this available for you to look at. You can read. Uh, this was on gun violence, gun reform. So you can look, read, read over this resolution uh, at, towards the end. And um, yeah, so I just wanted you to see what that looks like and what you can create in this year, okay? All right. So with that, any questions before I give it over to Shantae? All right.
All right, thank you. So again, my name is Shantae and I just want to welcome you uh, again to the twenty-four, twenty-five year. I'm excited as this is my first year. Um, I am very impressed. I will have to say tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, I definitely was not as mature as this group of individuals. So I am impressed and I am super excited to work with you all. I think I can actually learn a lot from you and hopefully we'll be able to do great things um, for this term. Also to Commissioner McCormick, Baker, um, Baker McCormick, I'm sorry, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. Yeah, I'm super excited. Um, it's been a journey so far working with you. Um, I've learned a lot and I just think you're super amazing. So thank you. Thank you for this program as a whole. Um, I'm excited. All right, so and to the parents, thank you all um, for my crazy communication to anybody I missed. I, I promise it was an oversight, but I'm glad that you all are here and hopefully we'll have again a cohesive term um, coming up here. So real quick, uh, for the code of conduct, um, just for record purposes. Um, do you want to go through the whole thing? Yeah, because, yeah, it's, it's the code of conduct, of course. So just making sure that we continue to remain friendly um, and that we are law-abiding citizens, not just here, but everywhere. We'll show respect for each other, um, for whoever you come in contact with, with our actions and our words. This will include members of the group as well as those outside of it. We'll respect the facilities. Um, so we'll pick up behind ourselves, of course, no walking or running in the halls or on the furniture, no standing on the furniture. Um, and then we'll clean up after ourselves. We'll be respectful with our language. Um, no illegal drugs, smoking or any weapons of any kind on the premises or anywhere. Um, at no time will the leadership of this group tolerate language or behavior that is disrespectful or rude to other council members or to those in authority over the group. This includes the Wayne County Commissioners, chaperones, parents, advisors, and those involved in the operation of whichever location or event we are attending. Such behavior will be grounds for dismissal from the Wayne County Commission Youth Council. Disruptive or unsafe behavior on trips will not be tolerated. Disruptive and unsafe behaviors include any violation of the Wayne County Youth Council rules as well as specific rules imposed for that trip. So for the dress guidelines, we are asking that you keep it business casual. Um, clothing should not be disruptive or um, bring unnecessary attention to the person. Um, so the following will not be permitted. Um, midriff shirts, spaghetti straps, tank tops, see-through clothings, tube tops or halter tops, visible undergarments, pants should be worn at waist or your hip level. Dresses, skirts, shorts, squirts and garments that is shorter than the wearer's fingertips with arms and hands fully extended. Jeans and t-shirts are not permitted to wear to a meeting. If a garment has a slit, the top of the slit must be lower than the person's fingertips with the arms and hands fully extended. If you would not wear it to a job interview, then chances are you should not wear it to your meetings. If you dress in an inappropriate manner, you will be asked to put on different clothes or you may be asked not to return to the meeting until you can abide by the dress code. Um, you will be asked to leave the student council if you do not meet said requirements. So for the attendance, at your regular youth council meeting, I'm sorry, attendance at regular youth council meetings is expected from all members. If a member cannot attend due to sickness or for a duly authorized reason, the member shall notify the Office of the, of Commissioner Baker McCormick. Any member who fails to appear in answer to his or her name when the roll call is at any regular meeting shall be recorded as absent, excused or unexcused. Any member of the Wayne County Commission Youth Council who missed three consecutive meetings will be asked to leave the council. Um, I just want to note that as a chair or an executive position, the requirement or the allowance for meeting missed is two, not three. I understand that I cannot miss more than two unexcused meetings throughout the Wayne County Commission Youth Council year. The final authority determining what is and what is not considered disruptive and unsafe behavior will be the youth coordinator. If your behavior is deemed disruptive or unsafe, your parents will be notified and you may be removed from the program. So I will always keep a positive attitude and be grateful. And I do ask that each of you sign this, um, that stating that you have read and that you agree and then we'll, we'll get that submitted at the end. Thank you. Um, just gonna go over our tentative schedule. So today's meeting, we're here. Um, I do want to state though, for the record, all of our meetings will be uh, either in person or in Zoom. The schedule that you have in front of you is a tentative schedule, so any uh, changes or adjustments, you will be notified. And if you notice, we only have um, information up through September twenty-first. So we are still determining the program dates, I'm sorry, through January twenty-third. We are still pro- uh, determining the programs for the tentative dates that are on the back. But the first dates, um, today's day, October third through January twenty-third of twenty-twenty-five are uh, basically kinda already set. So I do want to highlight that in March, we are tentatively, or to be determined, we are working on a trip to Washington for our chair and vice chair. Um, more information to come, but that is to be noted. It's important, especially if you run for chair or vice chair. Um, a couple of important upcoming meetings, um, there'll be a parent meeting or a brief parent discussion today. And then also on January twenty-third, parents, we will also ask you to join in on that meeting, which will be held via Zoom. So please mark your calendars. Um, our special meeting on Saturday, well, we want to have a social event. So let's talk about our December social event. This particular event will actually be discussed by you all. You will decide what it is that you want to do as the youth council. You will vote on it and then we will um, decide. So that'll be our December's social event. Um, some of you were here last year, so you guys kind of know what usually takes place or what you like to do. It can be something different. Um, but definitely think about that and bring that to, I believe, our next meeting.
For those of you that were members, um, maybe you could talk to the advocacy training at Wayne State. That's gonna be November twenty-first. I don't know if either of the members attended. I don't know if you know, okay, Wayne State. Did you already talk about it?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay, because that's November.
Yeah, November twenty-first.
Yeah. Okay, no, no worries. I, I thought you guys attended, but okay.
Yep, so that is uh, that's our next in-person meeting. We will be at uh, Wayne State University. Um, we'll have a special guest speaker, Jason Smith from the Michigan Youth Justice uh, Department and then Darnell Blackburn from WDIV News. He's the crime and safety expert. This is when we will discuss our social activity. This is when we will discuss our social activity that we will schedule sometime in December. I'm just trying to get the highlight dates. And then Thursday, January 23rd, will be another Zoom meeting. This is the day which will vote on the initiative topic that, that is going to be due. We'll also have a guest speaker, Rono Dickerson. He's the Vice President at JP Morgan. And this will be our financial literacy, a kind of a workshop. And I believe by then, did I miss it? We already have the 21st? Yep, I talked, oh, I did not, I'm sorry, guys, I'm jumping around. Saturday, December 21st, we will be at the DIA. That is our holiday luncheon. And this year, we're going to do vision boards. So we are asking that if you have some magazines that you want to kind of just collect, that you bring that to our December 21st meeting. And of course, literature or more information will come out, but vision boards, I think that's going to be really fun and effective. And we have a tentative special guest speaker, which is Justice Kyra Bowden. She is the youngest Supreme Court Justice that sits on the Supreme Court. She's amazing, she's young, she is doing her thing. And then we're going to have a book reading assignment. We'll get our books and that day we will receive our T-shirts. I think we have some sample shirts. Wait, let me grab. This will have this logo, this isn't a logo yet, but I just want to show you the shirts.
So last year, we went to Lansing. For those of you remember when we went, there was a group of students that had their blazers on and they were looking so coordinated. We were like, okay, maybe we can do something. And so I thought we'll get the logo, put on the sweaters and you could wear the sweater over, you know? Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's, it doesn't cost a whole lot, and I like a blazer. But everyone gets the polo shirt, you, you already have that polo as well. But I think the sweater dresses it up a little bit more, so, yeah.
Do we have any questions? Yes.
State your name, please.
My name is Meadow Williams. So I'd like to know where our funds come from. So do we do fundraising activities or are, is it outside bank that we, we use?
So when we first started the program, a lot of it was donations through organizations that would donate to help fund the program. But after a couple of years, we went back, I went back to the commission and said, hey, how, you know, can we get a budget for our youth council? And so now we have a, a small budget that we can have or do activities. I don't know, do you happen to know the budget this year? I don't know if we changed it or. I know we shared the budget last year. After the youth council was started, we also started the Women's Council. And so we kind of share that budget. That's why I'm not really sure what it, what it is. But yes, we do have a small budget, not huge, but enough to do a few things, yeah. No problem. That's a good question, yeah, because you need money to make things happen. Yeah, and that's important. So again, anytime you see a commissioner, you want to thank the commissioners for approving and, you know, pushing the program through because if it wasn't for our commissioners, the program wouldn't be, so, yep. Any other questions? All right, there's no other questions. Attendance is very important. I will keep stressing that because without you here, and we do understand that your schedules are busy. But if you do commit to this, please commit fully, especially if you are an officer or want to be an officer, you, you need to know that you need to be here for things to run effectively and efficiently. All right, so next thing, elections. Yay. Always fun, always fun. So we had a couple, I know two for Chair, right? And then we had, sure. Yes, you, you can run for more than one. In fact, most of you don't want to run, so it's going to be left to a, a few for the positions. So, yeah, we're, and just let me say that I ran for Commissioner for 10 years before I won, every year, every election. That seems like a long time, doesn't it? But it's okay, because things happen when they're supposed to happen, right? So it's about not giving up and not giving in. It's about persevering and staying in something long enough to win it. Because if you don't stay in it, you can't win it, right? So what I'm saying this for is because when you run, when you step up to do anything, you win automatically because you are brave enough to step up because somebody else didn't, right? But you did. And when you step up and put yourself out there, you win automatically. You also build boldness and braveness in, in your whole demeanor, you know? So don't think about, oh, am I going to look funny or am I going to win, you know? Or it's not really about that, it really isn't. Because you win either way, you're winners, all of you. Okay? So, and even when you're speaking about anything, you know? And to tell you the truth, half of the time, I'm, I'm nervous too when I, when I speak. Depending on the crowd, I'm, I'm nervous. So a little bit of nerves helps you in life, I think, too. So don't worry about all of that, just do it, just do it, just do that, right? That's it. So saying that, okay, let's start, let's go backwards or should we go forwards? Okay, forward. All right, yes, we should. So you can take over. Whoever is the, whoever wins the Chair, you're going to run the rest of this meeting. So you're right. So, okay, anyone on the line wants to run for Chair? Anyone on the line? No? Okay, and you are?
My name is Sneha.
I'm sorry, can you say it a little bit louder?
Yeah, S-N-E-H-A.
Okay, can you say your full name, just, can you just say it louder?
Yeah, Sneha Aragio.
Thank you. All right, so we'll let you go first then. And what we need is a two-minute statement on, we're, we're starting with the Vice Chair, right? So that's what you want to run for, right? Is that correct?
No.
For the Chair? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I wanted to run for social media.
Okay, so we're going to start though with the Chair. We'll, we'll do that. Anyone on the, on the line that wants to run for the Chair? We're going to start with the Chair. Okay, so now we know that you both wanted to run for the Chair. So we'll start, I'm sorry, I can't see your name. Meadow Williams. So can you come up here?
Yes, I can.
And, I don't know. If you stand like right here next to the mic, we should be able to hear you very clearly. Two minutes as to why you are the best person to be the Chair of the Wayne County Commission Youth Council.
All right, hello, everyone. My name is Meadow Williams and I am a junior at Renaissance High School. And just like all of you, I've got many hobbies. So I enjoy playing the violin, servicing my community, and I'm also on my school's robotics team. Ever since I was young, I've always loved helping people. From the age of 11, I was elected as the YPD, Young People's Division, which is a faith-based community within the AMU Church that likes to help other peers and other children within the community strengthen themselves and better themselves. I was elected as the Worship Director, so I prayed in and out of every meeting and, it's okay. I prayed in and out of every meeting and I hosted multiple events. The year later, I was elected as the Michigan Conference Second Vice President and I hold that position until the, currently until President. And for our local position, I was elected President from 2020. So I've held many presidential and vice presidential positions, but my main goal is to be an impact to my peers. A lot of other people in our community within youth don't see a lot of positivity coming from others and coming from people who look like them and who are in the same position. And a lot of times, adults don't understand the position that we're in. So I'd like to be a liaison from the youth to our adults to show them that, hey, we're here, you can see us. So I'd like to be an impact to my peers and I'd like to be a role model. And I'd like to show them, you know, there's positivity and there's love in the, within the community and you can do anything you want. Thank you.
All right, testing, testing, okay. I hope you guys can hear me. Hi, I'm Nivee. Today, I'm just not probably going to talk about who I am, because I mean, that's not really important, is it? Because we're all public servants, right? So I'm going to talk about what I can do for you guys. I remember, like, this was a few years ago, I was standing in Detroit and everything looked really big. Mind you, I'm like five foot four, but I'm still very insecure about my height. But I'm going to assure you that it probably took so many people to build those buildings, right? That's kind of like, thinking about the commission as a whole and our council, it is a team effort. So as you're, if I am elected your Chair, I want to work with you all. Last year, we have had so many different experiences and I was wonderful serving you all as a secretary. And there's three main things I want to do. I want to get us involved. Last year, I've noticed so many like students being disengaged and falling out and not completing a resolution. But this year, I want to really listen to your ideas and so we can bring it all together. My past experience working with the council can really help with this as I know how it goes. I know I've been there before and I can also help our new members regardless of getting elected because that's just what good people do. Second, I want to get us connected to local jobs within the community. We have so many useful people here, so many great staffers, commissioners, prosecutors, and I want to get us in touch with people in our community to really help us have that career path we all want to achieve, regardless of areas, because we want to make Detroit and Wayne County as a whole better. And lastly, I want to help us organize some bonding activities for all of us because I think we really need some good ice cream together. Overall, I mean, regardless of wherever I am in this election or whoever we are, I'm just looking forward to working with all of us, all of you guys this year. And you know where to find me, thank you.
Right, excellent, excellent. Birthday, let's give them both a hand, yes. Outstanding, outstanding. So we'll just do a hand raise, by hand, right? Or do you all want, don't want to do hand?
Sorry, Commissioner Fomay, I recommend maybe doing like a paper vote, have them write.
That's fine, we can do that, that's why we're here, this is your, your council. So we'll do paper vote. And while we're doing that, let's talk about who would like to run for Vice Chair. And I'm, I'm quite sure, okay, all right. Because usually what happens is the other person runs for Vice Chair. And, yeah, so we'll see, yeah, we'll see what happens, yeah. Yeah, and, and you probably can tear them in half because we're going to vote on the others too. No, I'm saying tear your papers in half or in thirds. Actually, we're voting for three, you can, and you're going to need more pens now. Yeah. Yes, you, yeah, so what you probably have to do is, what, how can we do this, online? Yes, you can just send us an email as, as to how you vote. How many are on, on the phone, by the way? I think it's five of you, is it? Is it five? Okay, five, yes. Is it six? Okay. Okay, yeah, because we have one online for Secretary, too. All right, let me give you my email and you could just shoot me an email, okay? Those are online for Chair and Vice Chair. And then the names are, just give them the, the names. Running, Nettie, Meadow, Meadow. I don't even have a pen.
But I'm, I can do it. Are you, what are you running for?
Nettie, Kumar.
Let me just write them.
And then they could send it to you. And you're going to send your vote to M.B.M.C.C.O.R.M.I.C.K. At WayneCountyMI.GO. So that's MBMcCormick@WayneCountyMI.GO. I'll give you three minutes to get that submitted. Thank you. Okay, so. Absolutely, it is MBMcCormick At WayneCountyMI.
Her name is this.
G O.
That's the one I was. Me Day Williams. Okay, I thought I wrote somebody, the wrong person down.
This is connected to the internet, I'm going to have to go down the home. I ain't hear you, what did you just say? Okay. Actually, they could just tell us what they want to vote for. Yeah, let's do it. Yeah. Because we want to move forward, so without stating your name, just tell me, how many colors do we have? Just go for the first person, just their first or last name. And take it off, take it off that. Okay, all right. Can you guys just tell me who you're voting for? Okay, everybody vote. Okay, you got it, thank you. Okay, you got it, thank you.
I feel bad, I don't wanna choose. I think I'll run, I might start shaking, I get almost scared, but I'll try, I'll try it out.
Right, four, we're gonna have one more.
I think I'll, I think I'll run. Okay, okay, I will go then.
That's what I have five people online, right? All right, thank you all so. So great.
That's what happens when you have two good candidates. Okay, so, um. Right now, yeah, just. All the same, right? Oh, the name, sorry, excuse me. Nope, these are all the same names. You got the same names?
Yes.
Right, I just wanted to make sure I didn't mix it up. Right, I got, no, I'm.
So.
How many, how many?
Ten total.
Ten here, okay, so thirteen, all right. Uh, and it looks like, uh, Nettie Kumar.
Congratulations.
Okay. Congratulations. Um, like I said, both great candidates, and, um, now, um, Madam Chair, you can come sit here. Okay?
Let me put my stamina going all the way, that's not very exciting.
There you go.
All right. All right, okay, hi, everybody. Um, you probably know me from my botched speech, but now we're gonna go, and we're gonna continue down our line of elections, and we are going to see, um, sorry. So now we're going to see our elections and who wants to run for Vice Chair. So, um, first, um, is there anybody online who would like to run for Vice Chair? Anyone online? I guess not. All right. And with that, I, I hope none of us scared you off, I know me and Meadow are good speakers, but like, um, all right, anyone in person who would like to run for Vice Chair? All right, Perses? Precise, okay, um, just tell me your names. Your what? Wanat?
My name is Wanat.
Okay.
My name's Amir Cossum.
Okay.
But call me Amir though, call me Amir.
Okay, Amir, and Kelly? Okay, so I'm just gonna number you guys, one, two, three, four. Is that order good for you guys? All right, um, so with that, our first speaker can come up, and, yeah. Do you want me to time it, or, or, okay?
No, she could just sit, you could just sit right there while they speak. And then just, that's it, you could stay up right here.
Hello, everyone, um, so, a little bit about myself, my name is Perses. It might be a little hard to pronounce, but this isn't my first time running for something, I'm very confident in myself, coming from a young girl who was very shy. I am now very good at public speaking, so yes, I have social anxiety, but it's not kicking me right now. Um, I am student council president at my high school, I won homecoming princess at my high school. I also work with the state of Detroit, city Detroit, with a little summer program called GDYT. And if you're wondering why I'm a little dusty, that's why I left work. But I am very known for leadership, I've always been a leader my entire life. My goal is to make sure young women, young men, know that they are leaders in their community. It's not hard to get your voice out there. I've also left a meeting with the state for my school district this morning. I am the first student that's rolling, um, to make sure student voices are known. And just now, outside of the community but in your homes, it's okay to communicate with your parents, it's okay to communicate with teachers, it's okay to communicate with any adult that you need to communicate with. And I know a lot of us are scared sometimes, we think that our voices are not gonna be heard, but you will be heard. And that's my goal here, running for Vice Chair, is to let everybody know you will be heard, and I will do everything in my heart to help our chair, to make sure that you guys know you guys are safe, and we will make a difference in this community, cuz that's what I wanna do. I wanna make sure everybody is involved in the difference. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, my name is Kelly, I'm a senior, I go to Cass Tech, and I'm running to be your Vice Chair. I've actually been in the Wayne County Commission Youth Council for three years, so I'm the most senior member. Um, for the last three years, we've been doing a lot within the community and for the community. And for me, my job, I wanna be able just to support, um, the, the chair, and just to fill in when she's not there, and to kinda help you guys get to her. I think that a lot of times, um, we talk about being leaders and being impactful, that's something I wanna make sure that each of us can do, regardless of a leadership position or not. Um, at earlier, a commissioner, actually interviewed Commissioner McCormick for one of my podcasts, um, and she said that same quote, to stay in it long enough to win it. And I wanna make sure that all of us have that ability to stay in the fight, uh, whether we live Detroit or live in Wayne County, to stay in the community long enough, to stay within the realm of resources to help each other to win our own respects. Um, also served in very mi- well, actually, my school's like two minutes down the street. So a lot of times, we talk about Detroit and downtown Detroit, I actually don't even live here. So, um, a lot of times, it's just really supporting communities, sometimes you're not even a part of, and reaching out to people and advocating for people who don't look like you, who don't speak the same language as you, and so much more. So yes, I'm very excited to, um, have the opportunity to run to be your Vice Chair, and I hope you guys, okay, so earlier in my speech, I wrote, check the box, vote Kelly Cox, but there's no box, so right in the paper, Kelly, thank you.
Hi, my name is Wanat Hamka, and I'm running for Vice Chair because I'm a very strong advocate when it comes to social justice, and I'm very passionate about it, and I like taking an active interest in our community, and being able to see what I can do just helps me a lot, helps me out a lot, because I've always liked to help, to help people no matter what, and I like to see what I can do for others, as well as the impact that I can make in our community. In terms of social justice, I am really big on activism, I'm also a very organized person, and I'm very determined, as well as the fact that, sorry, I'm really nervous. Um, so, I just, I'm a big, um, I'm really like hardworking, and, um, while this is my first time being in an organization like this, I'm excited to see what I can do and finally put like my skills to use and work with you guys in order to make an impact, make a difference, and finally do something that's worth doing, so thank you.
Hello, everyone, uh, my name is Amir Cossum, Abdulaziz, but I would like for all of you to call me Amir. Uh, a few extracurriculars that I do take part in. I am a Green Buddies, uh, honorary member of NHS. I, I'm also a captain in robotics, uh, to reference, was it you said that? Yeah, it was you. I'm also in robotics as well, and I do have a bunch of other stuff that I do partake in after school. I do have a few leadership positions, um, oh, how could I forget? I'm the leader of the BSU at my school, it's a Black Student Union, and we also included the Bangladeshi students of our school as well in that union. Um, I just really wanted to say that I want to, uh, impact my community, and that is why I joined this. That is why I partake in the Green Buddies thing, because we go around planning stuff. We are helping our community in the long run. It may not be something that's done now, but in the future, I will see the fruits of my own labor. Um, I want to be able to communicate with everyone in this room. Everyone in this room seem like very intelligent people, from what I've gathered, and I, and I know I was late. So I didn't hear a lot of you guys' names, but I can see that you guys have insight. You're, the way that you guys look at when Ms. McCormick was talking, no one was distracted, and things of that nature. I know you guys will be taking this seriously, and I want to take this seriously as well. So, uh, that'd be all, this is, this was really on the spot for me, cuz, uh, I got the email late, so I didn't really know what positions were available, but you know, yeah, I'm up here now. Uh, that'd be all, thank you.
Um, I don't know if you wanna, so you can see, no, let Sean take, yes, she can take the votes, one, two, or three. Maybe they could do it that way, one.
All right, um, now can everyone in person, can you just write your name, you write your vote on your paper? Um, and if you need reference, I mean, there's the list of people who are here today. Um, and then just pass it on front, well, actually, no, don't pass it, we'll collect it. And yeah, hang tight. Everyone did a great job.
What time is it, how we doing? So, we're running a little bit behind, but we just have one more vote, uh, or two, one.
I only heard one vote, like secretary.
Oh, for secretary, so maybe it's just one person, one for so. So maybe we don't have too much longer, but that, that's it. We try really to be on time, um, to be an hour and a half, but the first day is, might run over because we're voting. But other than that, we're mostly on time, so.
Um, also, if your parents aren't in the room, I think it would be a great idea to inform them right now that you're running late, in case someone is waiting outside to pick you guys up.
And then we do have food, um, afterwards, so, okay.
Right, everybody has their, uh, doctor later on this side. Thank you.
Okay. Who's that? Oh, that's the old one, okay.
This is new.
Oh, that's new, okay. Okay, yeah, so it's overwhelming, overwhelming.
Okay, okay, you wanna announce the?
And with the counting of our votes, this year's, uh, for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five's Vice Chair is Kelly Cox.
Come on over, Chair, sit next to your. There he is.
Yeah, oh, I, okay.
Cuz they're gonna vote, um, I mean, they're gonna come up.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay, so, um, our next group, just checking, is anyone present running for secretary? Um, can, can someone check the, the online?
Uh, here. All right, um, online, do we have anyone interested in running for our secretary position? Secretary seat? Um, please state your name.
Amog.
Thank you, Amog. Well, Amog Mavator is interested, anyone else?
Anybody present? Okay, state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Brooke Bowers.
Okay, I'm a Brooke, right? Okay, great. Okay, we're gonna let Amog go first.
I'm gonna give you two minutes to, which starts now.
Hi, hello, everyone, ma, I'm Amog Mavator, I'm a junior at Northville High School, and I would like to be your secretary for this term. Um, I believe that I'll be able to be the best candidate for this position, because I'll be able to perform all the duties that, um, are being asked of me in a very responsible and effective manner. I'm a very, uh, hardworking, well-organized person, and this makes me a great candidate because I'll be able to create accurate, well-organized, and easily accessible records, ensuring effective communication throughout our entire, uh, board. Now, whether it be a general meeting or a board of directors meeting, I'll make sure that everybody knows exactly what happened in a very clear and concise manner. And whether, this will be with any decisions that will take place, any events that we're planning for the future, or just any information that is important for us all to know. And I'm also a very hard worker, and I'm a very reliable and proactive person, and this will help me make sure that I'm always doing all my work in a very timely manner, making sure that they're all up to date, and they're being done, uh, in a very high-quality manner. Thank you, and I hope I can serve as your recording secretary for this term.
Thank you.
Um, hi, my name is Brooke Bowers. I did not prepare a speech, but I just wanna speak from what I know I'm capable of. So we're in a room, we're making history right now. A lot of times, when people are talking about youth and social justice specifically, they don't hear our voices enough. We're not involved enough, especially when it's our community, that's what they say. But we're here today, and we're making history. We're all here, and we're all involved in our community, we all wanna make change, and I wanna be able to record this history. Um, I'm in a few clubs, I'm in Model UN, and I'm going to join student government. So we're in those sorts of clubs, it's gonna be having to take notes in a small amount of time to record a lot of information. So I think I'll be very capable of being your second secretary here. Um, also, I've studied on other leadership positions, and I've gone to other states on a National Youth Water Commission Council. It was, it was a meeting about water and water affordability. Um, I've served other leadership roles, and yeah, thank you.
Um, yeah, please put your voting in, just try to make it a little bit of a quick thing, cuz we're running out of time.
All right, online callers, I'll take, um, caller number one, your vote. Calling.
I have a few slips if you guys need me. Cuz there's one more.
Um, number one, number one is Amu Mavator, number two, Brooke Bowers. Thank you. Voter number two? Thank you. Voter number three?
Thank you. Voter number four? Thank you. Voter number five? Um, yep, so we'll make so for himself. Okay, I need a vote. Voter number five? I think that's. You can, yes, please. I just need a name, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it is. Excuse me.
Our 2024 to 2025 secretary is Brooke Bowers. All right, last but not least, we have our social media chairs. Can, um, anyone who's running raise their hand, please? Well, that's pretty.
Any, anyone online, um, wanting to vote, run for a social media chair?
Um, I'm interested.
Please state your name.
Sneha Olagia.
Okay. I want a line. One person. All right, yeah. All right, Ms. Sneha, you have two minutes to state your speech, starting now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sneha and I'm running for social media manager for our youth council. Um, because I feel like social media is one of the best ways to connect with people and just share what we are doing as a youth council and just make a difference in our community. Um, and social media is a very powerful tool, um, and it can help us raise awareness about the important issues that we discuss in our council and show our great work to others. Um, whether it's promoting events or sharing updates or, uh, highlighting, um, important pauses. I want to use social media to engage more young people in our community. Um, I've had experience running social media for different clubs and events and I've learned how important it is to keep things clear and creative and interesting. If elected, I'll make sure our social media is exciting and useful. Um, and with posts that get people's attention and make them wanna get involved. Um, I also wanna make our social media more interactive so we can hear from um, young people and get their thoughts on what's important. By reaching out, we can inspire more involvement and really make a difference together. So if you vote me as your social media manager, I'll make sure that we have a strong online presence um, and bring our council closer to the community and help achieve our goals. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Um, my name is Madison Fleming and, uh, I am trying to run for, um, you know, the social media position. Uh, I have experience with it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you please mute? Can you please mute? Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry. Let me start you two minutes out of it.
Okay. Yeah, I have a little bit of experience. Uh, I'm in the board of a cat, it's a casted cro- crochet club and, uh, I, uh, run a little bit of the social media there. So, uh, I, I know how like, uh, important social media is, like, uh, you can, um, everybody uses social media, especially children, and that's who we're, uh, aiming for. We want the, uh, we want the, um, I'm sorry, we want the, um, we want, basically, we want kids to be a part of our group and that, the best way to do that is by using social media because everybody uses it. Um, I'm also responsible. Uh, uh, I can, uh, I can, uh, I can, uh, put the photos and everything out in a timely manner. Um, I won't put any like bad photos of anybody either. And, um, yeah, social media is the best way to reach people nowadays. Um, and I feel like I'd be a good fit for that.
And now you guys know the drill. Um, I hope, this is a tight race. I hope someone will get my good angles, you know? Snapchat filter's gonna only get you so far.
It's important that every meeting, we should be taking pictures, like this meeting, we really need someone to, yeah, so.
And remember, regardless of your results today, all of you guys are valued members of this council. You are here for a reason and everyone, each and every one of your guys' input is valid and important. And if you guys feel like your voices aren't heard, you know me, just let any of us or any of us officers or just anyone else know and we'll make, we'll do our best to make sure you guys' voices are heard. Um, most of our best resolution ideas haven't been from just our executive team. It's been from you guys as a whole.
The first, first, and then, and then, Sneha, Sneha. Second, number two is Madison. All right, voter number one. Thank you. The number one is Sneha, number two is Madison. Voter number two? Thank you. Voter number three? It's probably, um, voter number three? Thank you. Voter number four? Yeah, okay. Voter number five? Okay, make us confused. Thank you.
Our social media chair for 2024 to 2025 is Sneha.
Thank you. I've read all the minutes. Yeah, everybody should have them, but probably won't, we over the minutes, just a glance at them. Make sure that's in order.
And is it, I will.
And, um, secretary, who's that? So, you should start taking notes on the, maybe on the back of something and then, uh, we'll help you in crafting your first set of minutes. Um, but every meeting, you should be taking notes from the start of the minute of the meeting to the end of the meeting.
And do I just get, um, like a motion and then I just go through the list for?
To do what?
Approve the minutes?
Nope, you don't have to do that. You just say all in favor of supporting the, you know, approving the minutes and, and do it that way.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, everyone. So next on our meeting minutes is the approval of the current minutes. As you all have probably collected from before, um, just from April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, just to give a brief blurb of it, you can just like kind of skim through it. Um, we presented and we voted for our resolution on substance abuse and mental health. We recognized our graduating seniors. Um, we just presented the team and other things such as that. And all in favor, well, I'll give you guys like a second, but just look up when you're done, I guess, skimming through this.
Um, let me make sure that, do they know what they're looking at? Everybody has the minutes?
Everyone has like the minutes, right? It's two pages. All right, yeah.
Anybody else need minutes?
All right, does everyone wanna regroup now? Okay, cool. All in favor of the minutes, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed to the approval of the minutes? Speak now. No? Okay. Motion passed unanimously. All right, next we have section H, new business. Does anyone or any, uh, council member have any new business to bring up today? Seeing none, we will proceed to I, announcement by members. Do any members have any specific announcements to make? All right, again, seeing none. Um, just, our next meeting will be, just keep a note of this in your calendar. October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, I mean, this year, October twenty-fourth at six to seven PM and it's on Zoom. It's not in person. Um, you guys will take these minutes home anyway, but we will have a guest speaker, uh, Lori Rivedo, I hope I said that right. Um, she is the MSU Extension 4H educator and the topic will be on time management and prioritizing. All right, okay, um, I'm assuming there's no public comment. Oh, sorry. Uh, any public comments today? Parents wanna say something? Oh, okay. Move out of the way. You can come out to the.
Just so we can hear you. Thank you, ma'am. Yep, you're so.
I am, my name is Joanna Williams and I'm Meadow's mom. But I would like to say how proud I am of this committee. You guys should be very proud of yourself and parents, you should be proud of yourselves as well. That's all that I wanted to say.
Anyone else would like to say something? Oh, I have another person.
Good evening, Youth Commission. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I just wanna say that, um, you guys are gonna do great things this year. I would just encourage everybody to ask questions, be super inquisitive, and follow your heart. Y'all got this.
Anyone else before we adjourn for tonight? All right, well, thank you for your public comments. I mean, my mom's not here, but is there a motion to adjourn? All right, Meadow?
I, Meadow Williams, move to adjourn the meeting of the Wayne County Commission Youth Council. All those in favor, say aye.
Oh, we need a second first. Anyone second that motion?
Second.
All right, motion second by Kelly Cox. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? And with that, that concludes our first meeting for this year. Thank you for coming, everyone.
Great job, great job. So there's food in the other room, um, that's have, uh, the parents, if you'd like to start first. Uh, their hands and tiger and then.
Kelly Cox, second.
Oh, um, before we get to march and go our separate ways, I came late, so I don't know like the顺序 of your names. Can I get that opportunity?
Okay, you wanna like go around those?
That would be cool.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Um, my name is Leah Irving.
My name is Brooke Bowers.
My name is Kyla Gullidge.
My name is Wanat.
Uh, my name is Maeve.
My name is Eva.
My name is Meadow.
I can't stay with you guys today because my dad's like kind of texting up on really fast, we have to go somewhere. But I'm so happy to be your guys' chair this year and if you guys have any questions, hopefully Kelly will pass her on my hand. Um, yeah, and yes, if you guys have any like social hour suggestions, like ice cream, I want ice cream, but that's just me. Um, just feel free to let me know because I, we need to start planning something this year. The last year, like you never went out. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
All right, good afternoon.
And if you find your code of conduct, um, or the oath, can you put them on the table? Yeah, that's what I'm just saying here. Thank you, Leah.